Okay.
Plans are you right now soon.
Okay, that's.
Sorry, it was me.
Okay, I think our echo is gone. Are you able to hear us, Alex?
Yes.
Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, um, because Alex wasn't able to join previously, um, to vote, would we like to run the approval of the meeting minutes a second time just to be able to log his vote?
Yeah, we have a we have a motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, we're good. Okay.
Thank you. The minute passed four oh, and so. Um. Our next item of business is review of the development application and staff would ask that the board consider approving the development application for marketing the properties at Knight and Ash. And this has been presented to the board, I believe, three times. The first was a true draft and we did some workshopping with it. On the second time, we had brought it back and I believe did just a little bit more fine tuning. But that meeting, we did not have a board core to be able to officially approve it. And so, um, we would like to invite the board to ask any further questions. And you consider approving this so that we can market this along with putting out word about Knight and Ash as being available for developers.
Oh, I've had a chance to hear it. I think it's fine. So I make a motion that we approve the land bank residential property development application.
You have one question.
Make a second.
No. Uh.
Go ahead.
Is is there, does the board care about like timeframe asking the developer on any of that? Because I mean, what's their plan of action start date? Yeah. I just, I was just curious about that.
No, I'm trying to remember if you have a timeframe in here.
From a CDVG perspective, if you're acquiring a property and you're putting funds into maintaining a property with CDVG funds specifically, um, which is the funding source we have to support the land bank at present. Um, we are not able to hold properties for a lengthy period of time without raising a red flag from the US Department of Housing and Urban. And so it would be my recommendation that consideration be given to the time, the length of time it takes for a development project to break ground and then complete instruction so that we can yield a CDVG eligible outcome. Um, but that's, that's the prerogative of the, the board.
Your recommendation was what?
I, I think consideration should be given to the length of time that it will take for a respondent to yield affordable housing or whatever CDVG eligible outcome. And I can tell you on our housing development loan program application, which provides gap financing for development projects with a different funding source, but it could work the same way essentially. Um, we put in that application that we, um, expect that projects from the date that they put in the application to the time construction is complete is no longer than eighteen months. So you could, if you'd like to mirror that, that would be a consideration.
And we certainly could add even here today, something such as proposed project timeline, uh, within the text of the application.
Talk. You didn't talk so much. Action plan, only a financing development budget. It doesn't have a timeframe in any of those. I think that's a good idea to, to add something in here that along with the development budget, have a time budget or operating.
Well, the same language from the HDLP application if you're that.
If you think that idea is right, I think it's a good. I wasn't trying to throw a wrench in that.
I, I sort of when I viewed it, I sort of assumed there'd be something in the development agreement as far as timeframe. But it's, it's a good idea to bring that out.
Okay.
We can certainly consider approving as amended and do any, this and any similar amendments here in real time. Thank you.
Then one other quick thought. This can be changed. We can change it next month.
Yeah.
And if we see we run into, we run into bump in the road, let's go, let's correct it here and get it done too. So.
And in fact, I'd only expect that as we refine our process, we'll find places where we want to continue to update.
Okay, we just go back and say we approve this with the addition of eighteen months and not make it as, and then let's, but that is this with that marrying eighty months.
Uh, you can, um. What I would probably consider is just asking for the development timeline and then using that as a selection criteria or consideration as you're reviewing applications.
I just leave it like you have it right there, development timeline, and we can determine, negotiate that timeline depending upon what the proposed is.
Right. So as not to be so narrow to not be able to consider projects that might not be able to start ground or whatever.
Okay, I think we had a motion in a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You want to first? Muddy houses. Thank you.
S- Sarah?
Yes.
Will this be, um, will this be posted like on the real estate website or is it going to be sent out to, how will people know about it?
So we will be posting it on the land bank project website. We also have, um, in the past few weeks, been working to cultivate a list of developers who are interested in the land bank and similar projects. And so I hope to have that list refined by early next week so that we can send that out to people who have opt in, opted in to find out about projects like this. And I'm glad to share a little bit more about what that process has looked like too. Um, so I think as we've shared before, we had been cultivating a list of people who had expressed interest in basically a broad range of development opportunities through the city specifically related to the sale of public housing units that are also available for sale at this time. Uh, one of our qualms in sending land bank things out to this group is that we know we have many people on that list who are specifically interested in purchasing a home for themselves and their household. Um, and so I didn't want to muddy the waters by sending complex development agreements out to people who just want to buy a home. So what we've been doing is we've gotten a few messages out through that email address to the general public. And I believe it was Friday last week, Thursday or Friday, that I had reached out to that group with a developer opportunity and said, if you are a developer and would like to be notified about opportunities such as the Wichita Land Bank, the Affordable Housing Fund, um, Housing Developer, Housing Development Loan Program, and other similar programs with federal restrictions and operations, um, please let me know and please opt in. I've had about ten developers opt in from that first outreach. We have since collected quite a few more email addresses at open house events that we've held on Sunday and Tuesday. Those addresses have not yet been entered in. Um, so I expect to be able to have those entered in by early next week. We'll send that same invitation out and so we should be able to send out land bank marketing materials to that cultivated list by mid next week. We know that we've got our nonprofit developers. We also don't want to be perceived as only favoring one particular group of developers that we work with. And so that's been part of that process.
Having widget on the, in the future.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, so also we do have website updates expected for the city's website as a whole. I believe in late November is the current timeline. We'll be entirely switching platforms. The new platform will be much more simple, um, searchable, easy to use. It's one I've used in a previous couple of jobs. And so I'm very excited about what that will bring, um, including the ability to really manage our web facing presence for this project in a way that, um, has all the board information in one place, all the property available information in one place, and hopefully becomes much more streamlined and user friendly.
Since you're setting up structures now.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to have like a preferred developers list? And to be on that, you just have to really do what you say. And if you have somebody that, that tries to do something and then they, it's been a total disaster, they can no longer be on that preferred list. I'll give some. Okay.
I think we tend to shy away from the term preferred. Um, at least in one of my other programs, I have discussed having a list of fully vetted contractors in good standing. And so something like that.
You think, all it is is just good standings. Otherwise, you don't carry any weight on, say, you gotta fix it. So you gotta do this. They go, what are you gonna do? I'll bet on the next one too. If you can say, hey, you know, if you don't do what you're gonna say, then there is some repercussions of that. There's now some accountability. That's what I was trying, some accountability to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. And if you can start off with that, they all know it. And all you're asking is that they do what they say. And I don't think that's asking for a whole lot, but it gives you some method of saying, there's.
And with this, we would probably look at making sure they have their tax identification numbers in place, certificates of insurance on file, demonstrated history of completion of any projects they worked with, with the city. Um, basically kind of ensure no delinquent taxes. So we wouldn't do all the checks on any sort of a list that we would cultivate.
All the requirements.
Um, so to answer, to really address what you're saying is yes, that is something that's definitely important to us. Um, and so that, that's part of really the staff analysis section. So we haven't had a development application submitted. So we're talking in kind of lofty language here, but as part of the board packet, that'll come to you when you're reviewing a develop, a proposed development application. There will be some sort of staff analysis. Think of it as like a spark note for the development application, but then also there's, there will, there will be information, objective information related to, does this entity have past performance with the city? Does this entity have past performance completing projects on time that we can speak to? Um, and so that, that'll be part of the review process so that you'll have that to consider when you're reviewing these. Um, I don't know that we need it necessarily on the application or we, that we need to maintain a separate communication list. The other thing I would wanted to mention is, you know, the, the land bank has an obligation to try and identify an end user for a property prior to taking it on, um, in order to be good stewards of federal funding, um, which is what we have right now. And so, um, speculatively bringing on prod, uh, parcels or, um, assets, um, is, is, is somewhat problematic at, at present. In the future, maybe if we get a different unrestricted source of funds, um, then that could be easier. Um, and so there has to be some level of due diligence of putting the feelers out prior to bringing on a parcel to know if there's interest in potentially creating affordable housing or putting a grocery store in a food desert or other eligible outcomes. And so that's also kind of plays into your sentiment as well.
So with, with the persons we currently have, we did identify an anticipated end use of affordable housing. We do, do know that we currently have a network that we have worked within, affordable housing developers, um, a number of nonprofits, um, community housing development organizations. But for the sake of the public interest in making sure that we are, um, spreading that message as widely as possible, we want to make sure that we are inviting other developers to at least be aware of it and have that opportunity.
I think as we talked before, this application will evolve as time goes on. So let's just make sure it's, this, this is not in concrete. It is a living, breathing duck.
Good. I just wanna, to Marvin's point, I, I think it's great that the staff will do the due diligence and that we built it into the process. My question's about what transparency to the developer? What's the signal to the developer that there's an expectation? And that if you haven't done these things, that will impede your progress.
It's a really, that's a really good question.
I think that's what Marvin's trying to get at, that, that there is an expectation and that it's explicit. Um, and I would be supportive of something that would signal at the very least that if you take this property, the expectation is that you're going to do something with it. And if you don't, the next time you come, we're gonna mark that you didn't do what you said you were gonna do the first time.
Having that clearly outlined in the development agreement.
Yeah. That way you don't have to dress it. It's, it's there.
And, and it's in there. Things like that are in the agreement, the home agreements that we have for HDLP, for example. Uh, but it is something that we could always strengthen and be more transparent on. And so consideration to that in the future.
Thank you.
By an anticipated development agreement, fallback provision that if, you know, they said they'd be doing it within twelve months gone by or eighteen months or whatever the timeframe was, and they've not done anything with it, that the land bank has to wait to come back and take the property back. So that was some kind of, we're not there yet, but that was something that we were top of the plane. So they didn't try to get it from us for a song and set on it for ten years.
Great. Thank you. And our fourth item is parcel updates. And so I wanted to update the board on the status of staff work regarding a multifamily apartment complex that we have been looking at for a few months. Um, things tend to move slow in government. There are multiple pieces and components. And I believe it was the day before our previous board meeting, three weeks ago, that we had a structural inspection of this property by an engineer, um, that was conducted September nineteenth. And since that time, we have been working through finalizing that contract, the payment process. And once that payment process has been completed, that report will be issued to our staff. Um, there will be two of my staff members who will be working together to review that report along with other observations in the building to create, um, project specs for what improvements would be mandatory, what improvements would benefit overall. And then to do a cost analysis for that. And we do tend to work within residential and some of the components of this will be more in the line of commercial because it is a multifamily, um, building, but we should have that cost analysis next month. Additionally, on the financial side, um, Sally was unable to be here today. She shared, um, that she has reviewed the financials for this particular, um, facility. She said maintenance of these units as affordable housing actually would make the project more viable if we were to do improvements that could allow for the issuance of project based vouchers or PBBs and that would provide assistance for the units. Um, with some of the rehabilitation that likely would be part of a project, um, the value of those units would go up to what those vouchers would pay in market rents. And so that would actually enhance the cash flow for the project and allow it to make the proceeds necessary to pay off any funds that we put into it. Um, if the Wichita Land Bank were to receive the property, we would likely use a combination of land bank resources. And then we also have a program called the rental rehabilitation loan. As it's currently designed, it is designed for single family up to triplexes. So we are going to be doing an overhaul of that program to allow it to assist because we know that we get more bang for buck with multiplex units. And so that rental rehab fund is a revolving loan fund at, I believe, four percent interest rate. So very competitive in today's market. Um, that allows both two, two forms of funding to be able to be infused, to get the property really fixed up and voucher eligible. And the upgrades would justify those assistance levels, boost the income to make the cash flow work. And then the project would be subject to all of the affordability restrictions in these funds. Um, probably fifteen to twenty years with these various programs, which would assist in continuity in the FDIC loan that is between forty and fifty years, subject to how they're counting the starting date on that project. And we still need to conduct outreach to FDIC about what we're considering. And one challenge that Sally had identified is that sex offenders are not eligible for project based vouchers. And so if the units are charging a higher rent, that would affect the fair market rents, that would affect all units in that facility. Um, I did a quick search on the offender registry and I did not today find anybody tied to that address. That doesn't mean that nobody would be affected, but that would be due diligence we'll continue to do just because in everything, we want to be sensitive to the needs of everybody. Any questions at this time?
One side note, rental rehab and what's funding the land bank, it's the same, it's, they're both CDVG funds. So no additional considerations with that, same, same type of dollar.
You've done a a structural on it. And we don't have anything under contract yet. It's just.
I think I've understood from staff that the contract has been finalized. Our payment process takes a, a while to get paid as well.
What's the next steps you guys have to do?
I believe once it's paid, then we'll receive the report. They don't issue their report to us until it's been paid. So we are aware of what was stated the day of the inspection, but we're not, we don't have the full written report yet. And so doing that spec and cost analysis.
The single family apartments is, is the complex?
It would be twenty-three. So this was the former hotel unit. And at this time, um, it has been proposed, it's a donation to the city. So we are not yet naming the address just because it's not yet a done deal and ready for a vote. Um, but former hotel, one unit is a laundry facility and then the remaining twenty-three are, well, available for occupancy.
Is there a, I, oh, this is the place, but is there a reason we didn't get it under contract with due diligence period? So that way, you know, right now we can spend all this money and then you may not come to an agreement on the price and it's all for not. Or is there, where are you at on, you know, cause generally in real estate, we'll do a contract and we have a hundred twenty day due diligence period. And then during that time is when we do all these tests. We know what the cost is. We know when we do not perform what the purchase price is. Is there a reason, is that, what's the thought?
Um, I think at the moment, the price is donation. I don't believe there has been a price asked.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna let Logan jump in here in a second, but my understanding is that basically between our funding source and having to ensure that we have an eligible outcome and things that the city manager's office have asked us to look into, we're trying to conduct those as preliminary.
We don't have a formal option exercised on the property. It is being proposed as a donation. The potential donor really wants to see it continue to stay affordable, which is why they seemingly really want to donate it to us. Um, and the land bank could be an avenue. It, it could not necessarily go through the land bank. It could go through the, the housing authority. But I think this is the, really the avenue that we're trying to see it, uh, potentially come through. Um, and so they're not, they're ready to wash their hands of, of it. They don't really want it any longer. And so they're giving us the time that we need to work through the city's due diligence and the land bank's due diligence process. So there's nothing, there's not like a, there's not like a timeframe that they've given us that we have to do everything by. And then the, the, from, it sounds like the delay on us actually having the report in black and white is we haven't gotten the contractor that came out and did that report, uh, paid yet. And so they're not, they're sending us the report.
Well, just giving input from this side of the thing here is, is helpful. But even this situation, I would have probably done an agreement that says it's still contingent upon your due diligence period. Cause what could happen is somebody says, I'll give you a hundred fifty thousand for it or two hundred fifty thousand is gone. And now it's not going to be put into this type of a situation. And then you wasted all this time and money for nothing. And so I would always encourage you to put something under contract, have a due diligence so you could, for any reason, you can get out. And then that contract says and or assign, so you can buy it as a city or assign it over to somebody else. And that also puts you on a track of, we gotta perform that. We gotta get this done in this period of time. Otherwise, it can float around and float around and then nothing's happened. So just from a board member, I, that's what I'd make a recommendation to your purchasing department, that that's how I would do the contracts.
And you could write it up, one dollar, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I can, it's.
Just gives you an opportunity to tie the property up so that if something does sneak in.
Anytime you have somebody that says, yeah, I'll do that, I'd, I'd get it there. So that way you can do something with it.
And, and Jeff, are those, it's pretty common for other real estate transactions with?
Yeah, you can ask Jerry. I think she's online, but I think we do these kind of things all the time.
Great. Jerry, are you, are you there? Jerry?
Yeah, I'm here. My phone keeps ringing, so I'm trying to, I was trying to mute accordingly. But, um, we don't typically have a due diligence period on our transactions. I know that we do see them on with the more complex economic development transactions. Um, well, I take that back. I'm sorry. We do build in a time period in our contract, but, uh, we're pretty flexible with those. Um, just, we work with the, uh, we're usually the seller. So we're working with the buyer and trying to determine, you know, what kind of timeframe they need to do all their due diligence on a particular property, because it'll vary for their use.
I just think that's a good, it's a consideration when we start negotiating contracts or have opportunities, like donations. So.
Try to have, do you still have your due diligence? Otherwise, it's a waste of time of money.
Save the time.
Yeah.
It saves money too. I mean, if it fall apart.
And that might be something that we consider once we get this final report and we know that we like to accept the donation. Go ahead and get it under, um, or exercise an option on the, the property and work with law on that.
It's not an option. It's a, it's a contract.
Okay, so it's like a.
And, and you're con, it's a contract that you have a due diligence period. You can do, by the way, we like to give for a hundred and eighty days. Or more. You have all these things that you can do during that time and you can get out of it without any penalty, without anything. Because it takes a lot of time and money to do your due diligence and it would be a little backwards if you didn't do it that way.
Logan, yeah, the due diligence can be written any way we want and for any time period. Um, the thing is regardless, it still has to go before city council because it's treated, it's like a contract. Cause if you're doing a contract, then we have to go before council.
And potentially the board first.
And you're gonna have to go to a council. So do it ahead, get it done.
Well, that's one of the reasons we normally do not do it is it's gonna go to council and the press will pick up that the city is buying this. It's why Real Estate Services normally does not.
And if it's coming through the land, you have to stop here first and then go to council, which is just additional. But I, I do appreciate that suggestion.
I think we're learning through this process. Whenever we, that, that's a very good point. Let's proceed the way we started on this multifamily unit. And then take that into consideration next time we have an opportunity, be it a purchase or a, a gift, donation.
I think these are great helps for us as well. We work, you know, within our lane, within government, but that professional and outside inside is so helpful for us. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Roger to provide the other status of potential acquisitions.
Yeah, that picture. Well, I made an honest mistake on the eight fif, eighteen fifteen South Greenwood property. It turns out that the garage that we've seen is not part of the property. There was a property sale to it. It has a building, a house, another building and the garage. Uh, I got by it last week or two weeks ago. It was boarded up. Garage is boarded up, small house is boarded up and the main house is boarded up. Accounting assessor also made the same mistake. So the property, um, the neighbor house, the neighbor's house has a split rail fence in the front and down the side of that lot. Our lot, the eighteen fifteen Greenwood lot is within that split rail. That is why the owner refuses to contact the neighbor because there's. That lot backs directly up, backs up, is side by side to the house. So it was an honest mistake I made. I apologize for wasting the board's time.
Do that lot, I mean.
She, she was, when I spoke to her, she was, uh, kind of surprised that we were still considering as a donation. as a donation, the time has passed.
So I'm so confused, so what are they offering to donate, or what were they offering to donate?
Just that, the vacant lot next to the house inside the split rail fence, which is connected to the house to the.
The owner is about here, do you want to come? Yes.
See the under block there?
Let me zoom in just a little bit more. Gave it up. For the eighteen hundreds, yeah.
Eighteen thirteen.
There it is, eighteen fifteen, that's why it was a good.
Okay, here's a picture. Here's the picture of the house eighteen. That's the neighbor. Here is the split rail fence. The lot is actually right here. Move down here. This is what we thought was the lot. This is the garage that's been boarded up. It does have the approach. And these are the other two outbuildings on that property, as to the south. So the mistake was made thinking that this approach was part of the donated lot. An accounting assessor did the same things. This is the lot. Where that split rail fences, and it ends right there.
The neighbor to the north, one, eight, what's available? And they take care of their place very, very nice.
All right, it was boarded up, it's been boarded up, main house, second house, and the garage is all boarded up.
The, the house is there, but it's still.
Yes, this house, this house.
To the left, or left.
This house is to the north, that's fine, the house to the south is boarded.
Their only opposing donation of this tiny sliver between.
Twenty five foot within that rail, split rail fence. And that was my mistake, because I did vet it good enough, and I looked at the GSI, I think it was, overlay. And it appears on that that there is a structure on that, eighteen fifteen, but it's such a sliver.
So it's a twenty five foot sliver? And who owns that? That was up for.
Yeah.
Okay, and that twenty five foot, couldn't we take that and then give it to the neighbor to the north?
Well, that's, if you could, we would ask them, but again, that homeowner doesn't, or that person that owns that lot doesn't want us to contact that neighbor to the north. Because they think that, and they're mugging problems.
So. This is where. To the neighbor, don't we? I mean, we can't just, I don't think we can say, well, he said I can't talk to him. This is a public record that this is. And I would talk to the neighbor and just say, hey, as of today, that doesn't belong to you. I mean, let's get it in our possession. And then go to that neighbor and say, we'll give this to you, you're ready to take care of it. Just make it legal.
We take good care of their property, I would say.
The problem is, is our funding source, we can't utilize CDBG funds to maintain that property and do side lot disposition.
We have to maintain it, can't we just accept a donation and then transfer it over to the property of the north?
And and this is where we get into the weeds a little bit, because we're still expending staff time to facilitate the process. And in order for us to have staff, staff salary and benefits, we have to qualify it as a program delivery cost, which means it has to be tied to an outcome. And so we can't tie this to an outcome, and so unless we were using restricted fund funds, or we have a very small portion of general funds in our department that I would not necessarily recommend having staff charge their time to that, because it takes away from other staff that are budgeted within that. We really need to try and make this work with CDBG. And I think one thing we're going to be exploring is a potential program option in the next budget process to ask for general funds to support the land bank. If that's something that we see is necessary, we've kind of already planted that seed. But at this point in time, we cannot knowingly spend staff time and code that as a project delivery cost.
So, so I guess the answer is, no, we're not gonna accept this donation.
It's our recommendation.
Go talk to the neighbor and see if they'll take it over, and then you don't have to, our issue.
But go talk to the neighbor. You know, is that what we're saying?
No, we won't go talk to the neighbor, the person that owns that lot can go talk to the neighbor, get it straightened out. We never should have been brought into this position.
I apologize for that.
I'm not, I don't like, yeah, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that the person that owns property to the south, Ross said.
We wanted to genuinely vet a potential donation, we take potential donations seriously. But I think through this process, we've also learned things that we won't be doing in future processes. We do need all parties informed at the onset for a potential clean transaction. We need to assess eligible use, and so these these fumbles ultimately do help us to fall forward.
Here's a lot to the south that looks so terrible, what's the status of that lot?
Yeah, there's a house here with three structures. This is the main structure.
Do you have the address of that, Roger? I can pull it up on the appraiser.
It would be probably eighteen ninety. There's the main house, the structure here, and the garage over here. And then on another note, as Sarah touched on, this was just by telephone conversation. So in the future, if there's a potential donation, I would, or somebody, we would staff would actually go out and meet the owner and physically look at the lot. So do we have it correct?
I think, Logan, that's a good point, we need to have some general dollars. You know, if you would have gone out, somebody really wanted to be, how do you do that, Roger? I mean, I, who paid for your time going out there?
That converts to CDBG admin, which we're capped at twenty percent of our grant, and that takes away from. The more CDBG eligible projects we have come through this, the more staff time we'll be able to dedicate to the process.
Get to what, dark programs.
And we can make sure we're strategic about marketing what we can do, I think, too. So it looks like that property is owned by LLC, the one next door that's boarded up.
What is the LLC's security?
I'm trying to find the document that has the picture so I can confirm before I state the name.
Small comparative. Is it, is it eighteen nineteen Greenwood?
Yeah.
The address of it.
Alternate House Solutions LLC. It does look like that could be a recent change, because former valuation notices and property record cards are mailed to an actual individual. So it'd be potential development activity on that, if it was recently acquired by a a holding company or investment company.
Like, it looks like it's not being kept up. I guess they're not violation of anything.
Well, when I look at the lobby, all three structures were boarded, and it looks like it expired on the front door of the main structure. And I did not approach to read what the flag had said.
This doesn't make sense why an LLC or an investor would just let it sit like that.
It wouldn't make sense why, if the investor, why he wants to give away the lot to the doors if he owns that.
It's not necessarily owned, the individual who owned the boarded up house is not necessarily the individual who approached just about the donation, correct?
Correct.
Different entity.
Yeah. She bought that lot, they bought that lot at a tax sale because they thought the house was included in that split rail fence. And for some reason, I don't know how those lots were separated. You know, I don't, to me, it looks like that lot belongs to that house. So now it's probably separated supposedly.
And what we need to do is tell that person that owns that twenty five foot lot, and talk to the tell the guy over here that, hey, I'll give it to you, so, and if you don't take it, I'm gonna give it to the guy next door and look what he's doing, and it's gonna look just like that when he takes over it. I think it should be a real brainer.
So if we knew the owner to this property, could it be? Would that, would that be helpful if we knew the owner of the dilapidated property?
With Alternate House Solutions LLC.
LLC. So could they?
We could try and forge the connection to see if they have, again, what level of time do we need to be spending on connecting this property with the potential? But I think it makes sense, maybe we should redirect to the person who was gonna donate it to Alternate House Solutions LLC if Alternate House Solutions LLC has a viable project.
I could be wrong, but it shouldn't take more than ten minutes if you get a hold of the guy to say, and write him a letter to say, you want this lot? What you think is yours really isn't yours, I got a problem, I can solve that problem?
I know the owner of that house, of Alternate Home Solutions, so. It's just, it's, so, I mean, I guess if, if it, if the land bank's not interested in it, it's just getting those two people together. Gotcha, okay.
I think we could certainly do some warm handoffs to try to resolve this one, but I would question overall scope of what we are really trying to do and whether that is something that we want to set a precedent for trying to do.
We want to stay out of this.
Yeah. Waste of time and money.
I move, we move on, yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Um, if the board were to choose to do a second and to vote on this, then staff would reach out to the landowner one more time to formally close this out.
Fine, you reach out to landowner, but we, we didn't want to accept a donation here.
Can you call for a vote?
I make that motion, do I have a second? All the favors say aye, pose the same sign. Landowners.
Thank you. Okay, so in the last meeting, there was a challenge to report back on several items that have been ongoing throughout the year. And so we have really taken that challenge seriously and wanted to bring some updates on several items that had been vetted throughout the year. But then also, at the end of this part of the update, to invite the board to help really refine goals and timelines and priorities for us. And so wanted to kick it off with the development application form and marketing, which was approved earlier this meeting. And, and so we appreciate that approval, that does allow us to move forward in marketing. We are creating a marketing list specific to developers. We will share that marketing list between the land bank, the Affordable Housing Fund, the home development loan program, and other similar programs that are really more for developers than for individuals. And we also will be following up with outreach to our open house guests from our public sale, open houses, or, I'm sorry, public housing, open houses. We conducted three rounds of open houses with the thirteen properties currently on the market through public housing. The first round was a Wednesday morning, Thursday and Friday afternoon, we had all thirteen houses open. We heard public feedback that those times did not work for people considering homeownership. And we do take that public feedback very seriously. So by early that following week, we had done a huge staff lift to staff a Sunday afternoon open house, it took fifteen staff members to pull it off. And thankfully, we had enough people who were willing to give their time in that way to do it. And then we also conducted a third round with half the houses open during the lunch hour yesterday and half open at the very tail end of the workday, so four to six P M. And so we are looking at data from those events to try to drive that forward. And I share that just because it's a different program, but I want this board to also know how we're looking at data in our decision making. And so we've had people sign in at those open houses. We know that many of them were real estate agents, developers, and other professionals. We did have some people looking at home buying. And so we will reach out to our open house guests to invite them to consider updates about land bank and other similar projects. And so with that, once we have that list cultivated, or at least the first version of it, then we'll be sending up marketing for Ninth and Ash.
When you say information, do you have numbers, do you have a good turnout? I mean, when you got that many staff out there for open houses?
I would say, actually, our first round was the strongest, the round that was a Wednesday morning and Thursday, Friday afternoon. We first announced those, I believe, that Monday of that week. And then we had tremendous media coverage of the project almost every single day throughout that week. And so we know we got a lift from that media coverage, from the novelty of this being the first time these houses have been open. So we had between two and three dozen attendees at each of those events. I would say Sunday afternoon was actually our slowest. We had places that saw just a few guests. We do have a couple of rooms open in some very desiring neighborhoods, and so those saw higher traffic on Sunday. Yesterday, I think the noon hour was fairly slow most places, except for those same couple of properties. The early evening was actually seemed like the most desirable time during the weekday. And so, again, we will be looking at that going forward. And so as we talk about all the different programs, I personally have five programs within my area. And so one of the things that had come out in this board a couple of months ago was the idea of understanding some of the other programs beyond the land bank and how those interface. And as we've continued to discuss, we talked about doing a joint workshop between the Wichita Indian Bank Board of Trustees and the Affordable Housing Review Board, which is a second board that the staff works with directly. And the board had challenged us last month to put together a proposed agenda. We did not make that in time to email it out, but it is at the bottom of your stack today. And we've also included other departments that we think would be advantageous to the conversation. And so I will kind of walk through for anyone attending online, but excuse me, let me get the right paper in front of me. Give me just a moment, I'll get that pulled up too. Actually, if Logan can pull it out, we're gonna have her take over, I don't think I have that one loaded over here.
Just stop sharing your screen.
I'll get there real soon. I'm afraid in passing them out, I forgot to give myself a copy, so I'll grab a copy and then share.
Laura, what, what day was it that you made the presentation, city council, on?
On the Affordable Housing Fund? Oh, it was a few weeks ago, September. I'm having it hard to even remember the date, I think it was the second or third Tuesday of September.
I'd like you to send an email out to board members. Let them know that you made that presentation.
Let them know that you made that presentation, they can find that on YouTube. Uh, because I, I think there was a lot of information there that might help everybody understand what we're trying to do.
September nineteenth, and I'll send the link.
And would this board find it helpful for us to um send out things about some of the other programs such as the housing development loan program and the affordable housing fund?
Yeah. Oh, I sort of feel like we're on an island at times. And there's all these different programs you're talking about, but I don't understand any of them, so. Uh, I, I didn't get to hear your whole presentation on the nineteenth. What I did hear, I wanna go back and research more and understand more, because there was a lot of information there that was very good.
Thank you. And yeah, I'm glad to send that out. I've made a note, and so we'll follow up by the end of the week on that.
Troy Anderson also made a presentation at the same time that gave a better overview. So it might help get a better idea of what the city's thoughts are, is that?
Yes, and actually, we will be revisiting some of those same themes, provided the choice available on whatever date we select at this joint board workshop.
That would be a good uh preview to what we may hear at the workshop, I guess.
And so we have the joint board workshop draft agenda. We do not have a date assigned yet. Um, with the board's permission, I would coordinate that mutually between the two board chairs and confirm those dates. We would then reach out to boards just to ensure that that was a date that worked for the vast majority, and then we would set that date. We do envision this as being open not only to board members, but to any members of the public. Um, professionals, media who might be interested in just learning more in kind of a comprehensive session. And so we would start with welcome and introductions to understand who is in the room and different backgrounds. And then kind of jump into where we have been. Um, the land banking project has a lengthy history. I know it's been a conversation for probably ten years at least. Um, and then really came to the forefront in the Places for People Plan. And so we would go in deeper um history about that, as well as the Affordable Housing Fund. And some of the needs that drove the creation of that fund and the opportunities around it. Our desire would be ten by Troy Anderson, who's our assistant city manager of our development services. Um, as you mentioned, I think it was in August, he conducted a council workshop about the difference between affordable housing and housing affordability. And so that's a fantastic starting point for what is housing affordability? Because it really translates more to, we're looking at census data and income ranges. And what types of housing and price points are not cost burdening people at those different income ranges? And it really creates the framework for what housing and community services works within, which is truly affordable housing. Where we're looking at subsidized programs for people at or below certain um financial places. We tend to operate at or below eighty percent of area median income with many of our programs. And so we're looking at people who are cost burdened without the assistance that we're providing. And so we wanted to start at the high level with Troy. And then look at MAPD and some more of the information kind of surrounding the Places for People Plan and how the land bank is really a key part of that plan and what some of that goal and vision was. Um, quite frankly, that will be helpful for me because I've been here since that was all adopted. And so it will be interesting to hear that history. Uh, we then would follow up with metropolitan area building and construction department and understanding some of what they're seeing on the ground. Um, code issues, dilapidated structures, vacant and overruled lots. Um, some of the things that the land bank is really trying to work to remediate and to head off before they become the problems that they have become. And then following that, we would look at housing and community services. Sally has a fantastic overview presentation of all the different programs that we offer. I believe we have somewhere in the ballpark of sixty staff and at any point in time, up to about forty programs going on. So it is heavy duty and fantastic work that we do in our department. Um, our section alone that the land bank is within has five different program areas. And so I'd like to do about two or three minutes to do the quick overview on each of those program areas as well. And then provide space for questions and clarifications and anything else that the board, boards would like to see.
Last piece, um, in the way, in fact, to where we are headed. It's, it's not unknown that the city and county and really our whole metropolitan area is short housing units. And so the city recognizes that need. This really does tie back to the workshop presentation Troy gave, which, working on getting the link for that. The part drafted with the Affordable Housing Review Board, so you should have that before, um, before you leave today. But, you know, the city acknowledges there's a housing shortage. And so what are things that the city of Wichita, not just our department, but our department is a big part of it, um can do to um to fix that issue? And so working towards a comprehensive housing strategy. For our portion specifically, we have brought on a consultant, WFN Consulting. They are assisting with the development of our consolidated plan. That is a high level, five year plan that we have to do every five years that looks at community development and affordable housing needs in the context of local market conditions. And so our consultant will be able to kind of listen in on some of these conversations as well as identify other areas where we can, you know, best strategize our funding specifically for that affordable housing piece, subsidized housing piece. Um, but a lot of the work that they're gonna be doing as part of that, the contract we have for our consolidated plan will help to inform a larger housing strategy. And so that's where we'd like to talk about that in this joint board workshop as well.
Does the board have any questions, suggestions, edits?
I think it's a good start. I'd like to think about this a little bit. You, Troy's presentation, your presentation, city council. Maybe tweak this a little bit, put some time limits on some of it.
For sure. It could be a very long afternoon if everyone shared everything we know.
The caveat I would say is if we kick this to not finalizing an agenda until the November meeting. Uh, and keep in mind, this is joint board workshop, so we would also need to engage the Affordable Housing Review Board in the same way we're engaging you. Um, or the Wichita Land Bank. Um, chances of getting this on the agenda before the end of the year are very slim. In order to get everybody, um, as you guys are, I'm sure you know, um, between, you know, holidays. Um, it can be very difficult to get everybody in the same place. And so, um, I believe we can make this happen by the end of the year if we're able to run with what we have here.
I'm fine with running what you have, but I think we need to define it a little bit better before we actually have a presentation. Does that make sense, Logan? I mean, I, I just. Where are we now? Well, we, we can spend half a day with Troy all by himself. So, I mean, let, let's get specific on what do we wanna talk about? And, you know, uh, that's the only concern I have is, let's define it a little bit.
And we can probably also put timelines on it as well, so that we really are understanding how much time we're planning to dedicate for each presenter.
So I'd like to have more conversation on the strategy opposed to.
That's good feedback.
So, one thing I don't, and I don't know if this is the forum for it, is that we have a lot of legislative issues that hinder what we do. Is this format that that needs to be addressed? Are there some changes legislative that we need to do so you guys can do your job?
I don't know if this would be the right forum for that, um simply because the same issues don't necessarily affect the Affordable Housing Review Board.
I think that's gonna be more. So I, I just don't wanna lose sight of that because we waste a lot of time just because we can't, because of some issues that I think could be changed. Doesn't matter to me where it is, it shows up somewhere.
I think certainly that could be included as we present about the land bank briefly to talk about the hurdles and the obstacles, because we will have a lot of people in the room with a lot of knowledge. And sometimes those may be the times we open up solutions, but it probably won't be the theme of what we really talk about with the land bank overall.
Those are things I'd like to hear from staff. What hinders you guys from being able to do your job, uh, that you deal with every day or every time you come up with a problem? I don't know those things, just a little bit I've been here, feels like your hands are quite tied.
And I'm gonna flip this back up and share my screen. Um, unless there's other discussion at this point, and we certainly would um welcome board feedback after the fact. We are currently anticipating an Affordable Housing Review Board meeting on October thirtieth. And so we would present similarly to that board at that time and then work to coordinate final details. So that gives about two to three weeks to accept feedback from this board, um to refine this. And I've certainly made, certainly made some notes about putting some timelines, tightening up what we're looking for in each presentation. And just making sure this is an afternoon or a morning that flows really well and is worth people's time. Yeah, okay. Let's see. And so our next item was neighborhood meeting feedback. Uh, we did community engagement in April and May within a couple of the neighborhoods surrounding the Ninth and Ash properties prior to acquisition. And we wanted to make sure that they saw faces and knew the faces associated with the project. That we talked to them about what would and wouldn't be um seen as positive use in the neighborhood. And so I think our end, anticipated end use for those properties of affordable housing. We're not necessarily looking at high density, because that was a concern. Um, but I, I anticipate that our end use would be in line with the neighborhood feedback. And we also, as we were working on contracts, would be going back out to continue that. Um, we did meet with the neighborhoods in May. And in addition to feedback on the proposal to acquire those two properties, we received feedback on several other things that were concerns for existing homeowners. Um, they like to be notified of development, but they also wondered what's there to assist them to remain in their homes and with upkeep of their homes and to keep up their neighborhood. And so one of the pieces of feedback that we had noted was a request for assistance with repairs, remodels, rehabilitations. Um, specifically exterior structural issues such as fresh coat of paint or siding or things that protect that envelope of the home. Within our programs, we do offer a home repair program that can assist with those, although funds historically have been and still are targeted toward what we would consider life, health and safety issues. So for example, something like a furnace not working is going to be prioritized above a paint job. Um, we receive many, many requests for assistance and we cannot meet them all. Um, we've actually been retooling that program to try to ensure that we're making those funds more impactful when we do utilize them. Really looking at how can we get holistic assistance with any particular unit we work within. Um, we do continue to have um options within the program for things like paint grants. But those tend to be an option at the end of the program year if funding remains in that cycle. And, but that is feedback we're listening to, trying to make sure that even as we do program design, that we're we're aware of what the need has, is that has been expressed. We also heard a desire for greater code enforcement, such as dumping um non-operational vehicles, weeds and trash. And truly, this is where we get outside of really what our lane is as housing and community services. But we're growing relationships with MABCD through code enforcement, probably is advantageous. And I think this board workshop will help get people on the same page. It will be an opportunity to ask questions. Um, one of the challenges in local government is that we do get siloed. And in our case, many of, much of that is funding related, that our funds do or do not allow us to do particular things. But these are things where as relationships are built, hopefully we can interface and at least pass along concerns. And development and businesses also was mentioned. Again, we can look at things that are CDBG funded eligible. We are not necessarily looking at, um, I think a gas station was mentioned as something that people would like to see closer. Um, that's not necessarily something that is within our lane. At the same time, we can still hold and carry that knowledge and try to be a connecting point if we do hear of opportunities. And I'm gonna transfer over to Lance for this update. He has been working on these.
Uh, we reached out to the Realtor, um, the Realtors Association of South Central Kansas who invited us to attend their next uh Government Affairs Committee meeting. Uh, we're gonna be able to present on, give an overview of the land bank, the Affordable Housing Fund and our public housing sale and the progress. And that's more, we're doing it as uh, one, to, to educate them on the different programs that we have and two, to open the door to future, future uh participation with them. Um, they seem very open to having us. Um, I've also done some preliminary outreach to the Wichita Bar Association to specifically target attorneys who work in the areas of wills, trusts, estates and real estate to try and gain some traction there to do something similar or uh identify a professional group or two that, that we could present to and, and begin a relationship with. As well as um compile, compiling contacts within title companies to, to do some direct marketing and, and things of that nature. And we're certainly open to any ideas that the board may have as far as pursuing other groups that, that uh could prove beneficial in our future endeavors.
Is there, is part of the expectation, or at least the hope, that because it's the Government Affairs Committee that we'll be able to share some of the concerns between local governments that make it difficult for us to do some of this work for their own adoption as advocacy points?
That's certainly a long term goal. I don't know that that would be appropriate at this first meeting. We're more, more or less getting acquainted and giving them an idea of what, what we're doing. But um, in speaking with their staff there, um, we certainly um communicated our desire to make it an ongoing dialogue with them, and they were, they seemed very receptive to that.
When is that meeting?
Uh, next Wednesday.
The?
Yes, ten AM. Sorry, ten AM, yes.
The goal.
Get their support.
Just for them to be aware.
And to understand how the land bank, as it's fully operational, could be of assistance to situations they may encounter. To understand it may be an option for properties that are difficult to otherwise sell or dispose of.
Cause the Government Affairs, I'm on the board. I mean, I used to be on the board of South Central. It's, it's, it's a political arm of the, of that. So it's a perfect spot to talk to when you get to that point. But what's your goal? Is it just to start interacting with them? I mean, what's the purpose of this meeting is? What's your out, outcome that you're hoping for?
I mean, this one will be primarily project introduction and update. Um, many are aware of these projects, but not deeply aware of the details. Uh, and this originally was outreach regarding the land bank specifically. And they said, oh, well, what about the Affordable Housing Fund and the public housing sale process? And we said, you know what? While we're there, we'd be glad to provide updates. Um, I think really about connecting faces and understanding of the programs. Not opposed.
He means I would say they're just inviting you in, education.
And there may be some area within that to talk about some of the obstacles that we've encountered. I don't know that we would be ready at this time to make an ask in terms of any advocacy. We will share a little bit more about where we're at with that here to bid.
If we have a list of legislative issues we wanna discuss, then we'll go back to them and say, are you interested in helping?
Yeah, I just wondered if it was, would be an opportunity just to share, not to invite or ask, but.
Yeah, sure.
There may be some questions like, what would help you make progress? What are barriers that you address? Can we just share those open? Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
So with that, um, those are some of the updates we were specifically asked about last month. But I wanted to go back and kind of go through several months and memories of what different priorities that have been expressed by the board would be. And one of the challenges quite frankly that we run into with our staff is that we are a small staff and we are stretched very thin. We, you see several of us in these meetings. But as I've said, I have five different programs that I'm supervising and managing. Um, Logan is our Assistant Director. Roger is still doing public housing property management for our remaining tenants and public housing, as well as really the specialist who's going to be cultivating more within the Affordable Housing Fund Program Program option. And then Javelin is our Home Program Specialist. We have her in the room here because these programs do interface since we get development agreements going. And so as we've filled the Home Program Specialist, Lance is really moving into being the person who will primarily carry things for land bank. And so while you see five or six of us at any given meeting, really what we're trying to achieve and move forward is with the equivalent of about one staff member. And so I wanted to share that just to set the expectation for what we realistically can deliver meeting to meeting. And so we want to make sure that we're delivering on top priorities from meeting to meeting. And I wanted to go through and see if we could identify what would be top priorities for this next quarter, this fourth quarter this year. And then look toward timeline and some things for next year just so that we're meeting the board's expectations and very clear on what we're asking of us moment by moment. And so these are little fonts. I'm glad to read them off. We did just approve the development application, so that is celebration worthy. Um, we have a plan effective next week to market the Ninth and Ash properties. And then out of those, we will be seeking development agreements with C D B G eligible outcomes. That will be a long and laborsome process as we're cultivating entirely new agreement templates and things. We're excited for it, but um, once we have that option, it will be a heavy utilization of staff time. And so those, we kind of know where our timelines stand. I'm sorry, it looks like.
Well, I mean, I look at this list and I see you're making progress on all these items. Now, if you think we're pushing staff too hard to get some of this done, then I think you need to tell us that. The challenge I see as a board member is I'm sitting here thinking, am I totally wasting my time because we haven't done a thing in the last year and a half that we've been meeting almost two years? So it it gets frustrating from a board member's position too. And I think this list is very, very good. I think you're addressing the things. The nice thing is we are knocking some of them off. Uh, I think in the next thirty days, sixty days, probably add a few more things. We'll define them a little bit more, but I I guess I'd like staff to help us come up with a timeline. When is it possible to to get more information on Sizer County Tax Sale Data Analysis? We've talked about that a lot. And I think we're expect, my expectation is is next month we'll have more information that we can dig into to understand how many of those properties are reoccurring. Because that's the type of information I want to have if we're gonna go to Topeka and talk about changing any policies. We need to understand what is the data.
I will say if data is the top priority, that probably can be the only priority right now. Um, each data set is probably a twelve to fifteen hour process. Um, so Jeff delivering what we delivered last month took dozens of staff hours to deliver. Um, I personally put in many, many nights and weekends to deliver that. Um, we're crunching as hard as we can, but there is simply not the capacity to achieve anything else along with the data right now.
I know. I mean, if if that's the case, then maybe we need to relook at what data we're interested in and try to define how do we get the information as quickly as possible without killing everybody? I mean, cause you know, I I have a feeling a lot of the information is gonna go in one ear and go out the other. So we need to figure out what are the bullet points that we really want them to understand that's gonna make a difference to our legislators? And find that data opposed to all the rest of the stuff. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I second that because sort of a lot of several boards and we don't do this kind of stuff. Seems like we're just
We're digging all the
We're leaving what you guys done this last month. Maybe we need to relook at and I'm not, please don't take me wrong, but there's a lot of stuff there, but a lot of that stuff doesn't, hasn't helped us really. I mean, your open houses, that was great, but what did that?
Can I say something?
What did that get us? I guess I'm not sure. You know, we can ask people what they want, but like for a grocery store to go into some of these places, it's not gonna happen unless the city is willing to um, pay for everything and get lots of different benefits because financially it just isn't gonna work. And so you can do it, you can hold picnics and you can hold all these meetings. Um, it's good to hear what it is, but when I get back to the land bank, I'm not saying those aren't good. Please don't take that wrong. Those aren't good things. We're talking about the land bank and what you need to do. To me, I, very first month here, I was looking at all the problems you guys had to do legislative. We shouldn't be, our first meeting with with Gentry at the the Government Affairs, that's one person that just takes care of governmental affair stuff. We go to her with the problems that we have and say, these things we need to change. What can you do to start this going? And can we get with the Kansas Board of Realtors? Can you get them to support these legislative changes so we can do our job? Now that's getting something done. Uh, but we're gonna go there and meet and say, hi, and hey, this is who we are. These are the programs we've got. I'd rather spend your time finding this stuff out, meeting with them. And I'd be glad to sit down with you and meeting with Gentry and say, this is what we need your support. You don't need to meet with the whole group. She's, that's her job is to take care of legislative issues that our members want. And it's a very strong lobbying group. Um, and and those are the things that can help you get your job done, not try to think of neighborhood engagement strategy and professional groups and.
Those are all things that this board asked us to spend our time on. Um, and so I think I have a clear direction of how we need to bring things to this board in the future and we'll make sure that that happens.
What is that?
Uh, it it sounds like things that are relevant to you only want to meet if you have an action to take. And we can push out education pieces like information about the Affordable Housing Fund Review Board and the workshop and other things that we have going on. Sharing those things, those those information pieces with you, but maybe not convening a whole meeting. So you can do it on your own time. Because we spent time speaking about the Affordable Housing Fund Program Plan. I personally gave that presentation. That is intertwined with things that you guys will have coming down the pipe. Providing context on the fact that Roger is still doing property management for public housing is is relevant. Um, and the sale of our public housing units is I believe that to be relevant to to this group, but maybe we don't need to speak about that in this space. And so the ordinance, I believe, and Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong, sets a minimum meeting requirement for this board. And so if we do not want to meet when we do not have action to take, that is perfectly fine. And we will recommend to you, we've done this with the Affordable Housing Review Board as well, that we do not need to have a meeting. Please read this information. Is that reasonable?
Well, I'm not advocating that that's a an inappropriate approach, but I am saying, I'm, I will advance it. I don't think that's what I heard them say. But what I think I heard Gary say is if these things aren't possible in Q four, tell us which ones are so we know how to manage the expectations. And I think that's what Sarah was trying to do and is say, you have all this stuff that you've asked us to do. We're working on these things. Which ones are Q four? Which ones are Q five or or Q one of next year or Q two of next year? And then if there are things that we decide, man, it's really gonna take you that long to do that? We'll move that up list because we'd really rather have the data.
Sure. Part of my model for the conversation that I want to have here. Um, previously I worked in Derby and one of their ways that they managed board and council expectations was that they had a quarterly update on council priorities. And these were citywide projects. Um, often they would have up to about seven to ten citywide priorities that were truly those top things that were important to council. Every quarter, they would stop and do an update on what those were. And they would remove those that had been accomplished and celebrated. They would add things. They had a waiting list of other priorities that had come up, but there wasn't necessarily capacity for. And so we don't necessarily have to do exactly that. But yes, what I'd like to do, I feel like one of the challenges has been a lack for staff with clear direction of what board expectations are. Um, specifically last month or two months ago, they were asked to do whatever it took to deliver the data. And we did. It was a tremendous staff lift. I had myself and about four or five of my staff members doing data entry. Not necessarily the best use of staff time. We shared about the public housing open houses because I want the board to understand that it is the same staff that is going from project to project um, doing those staffing things. Um, so we are, we are deployed in many directions. And for the both the board and the staff, I want to make sure that we're on the same page. Uh, if there is something that is truly a top priority, I want to make sure that we're delivering on that. Uh, but at the same time, we need to understand that we may be a little bit delayed in other priorities just based on capacity. And so with this, um, you know, we've got this list. I would be glad to take it back and do suggestions and recommendations. And potentially to bring that back for review next month. Um, certainly everything on here advances the project. Everything on here is important. And I also know of some things that are in the background that staff are aware of that the board is not yet necessarily has not yet asked for. Um, we have to do quite a bit of resource creation and customization for the land bank. So our tracking sheets and other things on the inside that will be administrative. We have great templates from Pittsburgh. And I think a lot of those we translate, but we do have to customize to our particular operation. Um, we have a website update coming up and so there will be quite a bit of staff left behind the scenes just to translate everything that's on the current site into those compatible formats in the future. And so I, like I said, I would be glad to bring back a better organized proposed timelines and just make sure that we're operating from the same playbook.
The only thing I want to say is please understand that board members on the land bank have no experience in the land bank. So we, we, we are a rudder to the ship also. And try to make some sense out of all this. When you've got five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten different departments and all these rules and regs. I'm sorry, I don't understand it. And we're doing everything we can to try to make sense out of this too. So some of the asks may not be directly in line with what should be asked. But that's because we don't understand what's going on. Um, and we need you guys to help focus us in the right direction. And I think even whenever we start looking at the meetings, maybe we need to be a little more precise and report out, here's what's going on. And, you know, get through some static, I guess. I mean, it's it's great education, but maybe we're telling each other the education piece.
What I I might advance or or just request is maybe a consent agenda that may be a hybrid between what you
Yeah, I like that.
elevated where there are things that we've asked for that you want to make sure that we have the information. We want to know that you're going and during the marketing, we want to know those things. Put those on the consent agenda. Yep, we know that that's there. Here are the two things you want us to talk about today. And in most cases, they won't be the two things that we want to talk about. Because we're coming up with things that are questions that we have. Tell us what the two things are based on what you already know is happening.
Seeing you, we will take that direction for sure. Um, I'm seeing like
What is? The main the land bank, what's its main purpose?
It underutilized and unprotected property back at of use.
And when we first started, our whole thought was that's gonna be from tax proposals too.
Correct, and
Large percentage of.
I would say that you mentioned that you feel like you haven't really done anything. I think we've done a lot. Guys have come a long way since you started meeting in November of twenty twenty one. And I think we've made a lot of progress. You have, you own, you own property? Something, really two, I guess.
I I guess I I asked that question before because if if one of those things doesn't regain that or doesn't do that, then we shouldn't be doing this. That makes sense? I mean, if if that's our goal. And if those things don't, and if it's too much, I don't think we need to add more. I think we need to define who we are, what we want, and what is our main objective every year. And if nothing comes up that has nothing to do with this, shouldn't ask, if it's in a different department, it's somebody else. But I think we're running a lot of rabbit trails. And I don't know if they all meet up at the land bank.
Like I mentioned before, and we're at three o'clock, we want to be respectful of your time. We start to get properties coming in that we can do something with, we can staff up. We can, we can increase the volume to to the, to the end of the mission.
With red flag.
She won't travel.
Correct, yeah, because we'll have outcomes. Right now, we don't have outcomes, so it's it's tough. Um, we do have a parcel though, so.
Well, and the the green one, that that was just a mistake.
Right.
Yeah, I think that that homeowner or that person that owned the lot should take the initiative to contact either one of those instead of asking the land bank.
Yeah.
Like in our business, we do strat planning now for next year. What's our strategic planning for next year? I have to ask you guys, what is your planning for next year? You know, we have to look and say, we've been doing this now two years. What would be your call push? To whatever your statement was, to do that, what didn't we accomplish? We can say a lot, or we can say, well, we did all these things, but to that accomplish anything for the purpose of this land bank?
And I guess I'd love to have staff say, okay, here's the five things we need to do twenty twenty four.
Cause we're here just to support you. I mean, don't, please don't take me wrong. Um, we have expertise too that you guys, I mean.
That we need to tap into.
Yeah, you know, so it, it's not bad at all. So.
I don't think we take it that way.
Yeah.
We certainly are all learning together. Um, I know Jeff just had to run off. Logan and I actually have a conflicting meeting that's starting now.
I uh, I moved, we adjourned this meeting.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.